Great, welcome to, oh my gosh, how can it be July 8th already? Amazing, well, move on to our roll call, please.
Councilmember John Larson, let the record reflect that Councilmember Larson is not present. Councilmember Chad Cassidy, and I was just checking my phone to see if I had a text message from him. I did send him the link, I believe he's still traveling. I see we have two participants, but I don't, I don't think either one of them is Mr. Cassidy, Councilmember Cassidy, so we'll say he's not present. Councilmember Dan Hahn.
Present.
Councilmember Melinda Cox, present. Councilmember Julia Stubel, present. Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Yes.
Mayor Wyatt.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Awesome, thank you. Next agenda item is approval of the agenda, could I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Stubel. Any questions, comments on the agenda? I don't think there's need for any amendments. Okay, we'll call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Yes.
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 And that passes. Great, we will move to public hearing Z 25.01, rezoning leaf green property from R5 to agriculture. We'll open the public hearing at 6:02 PM. And I believe, Rochelle, are you going to introduce this, or is that a Regine?
I will.
That's a Regine, all right.
This is ordinance 2025-5, an ordinance rezoning a parcel on Smith Creek Road, being a 12.14 acre tract of land in the northeast quarter of Section 20, Township 33 North, Range 99 West, from R5 multifamily residential district to a agricultural district. Whereas, there has been a request to rezone a parcel of property described above. Whereas, Section 472 of the City Municipal Code authorizes the City of Lander Planning Commission to hear and make recommendations to the City Council on rezoning applications, ensuring that the application is consistent with the adopted master plan. Whereas, the Planning Commission reviewed the rezoning request on June 5th, 2025, at a public hearing and found the request to be in concert with the adopted 2025 Master Plan Growth Priority Areas 2 and 3, and therefore recommends approval of the rezoning by a unanimous vote. And, whereas, the governing body of the City of Lander, Wyoming, has conducted a public hearing on the first reading of this ordinance, July 8th, 2025, in accordance with the City Code, Section 485, on the requested changes to the zoning map as described herein. Now therefore, be it ordained that the governing body of the City of Lander, Wyoming, approves the request of rezoning for the property legally described above, from R5 multifamily district to a agricultural district, as illustrated on the exhibit. Be it further ordained that, on the approval of the third reading of this, that the zone change will take place effective immediately, and be reflected on the City of Lander District zoning map.
Great, thank you for that, is there any public comment? And I see Mr. Leaf Green is here in the audience, if you want to likewise come up to the microphone to be able to answer any questions.
Hello, do I need to introduce myself?
Yes, please, and I think you need to turn on the microphone as well, oh, it is on.
Jeff Leaf Green, 1850 rodeo drive, Lander, Wyoming.
So I'm not seeing any public comment, any questions from council for Mr. Leaf Green?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please. Mr. Leaf Green, I'm curious why you're looking for this rezoning, can you give us a bit more reasoning?
Absolutely, there, I'm in the process of selling it, and the gentleman who's interested in purchasing it would like to grow trees for resale. My understanding, he's not going to have a shop, he just grows them and then he would uproot them and plant them in people's property. He's been doing that currently in Lander, but he needs a larger place. The size of that property would be perfect for him. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Smith Creek, though, but there's Conex boxes, storage units, there's no sidewalks, there's no paved streets. There is city water, but there's no sewer, so it's, and it's surrounded by other agriculture or commercial property. So I think it'd be a good fit to rezone it for agricultural purpose.
Mayor, if I may.
Please.
The agricultural zoning district for permitted uses defines nurseries as an agricultural product.
I'm sorry to hear. He is not, no.
Any other comments, questions from council?
Yeah, I have one, just not to the, not to Mr. Leaf Green. And I love trees, and I love the growth of trees and everything, but I've sat here for meeting after meeting after meeting about we have no room to put houses, we have no spaces, you know, it's all about affordable or attainable housing, and then we have this. And I don't want to take anything away from you or anything you have going. But, I mean, this, this would be an optimum place to grow.
I'd like to address that if I could, though.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, because I looked at doing that initially, I was going to do a subdivision, worked with Regine and Lance both for better part of a year, trying to figure it out. There's no sewer, the water would have to, the line is too small, it's a four inch, like, it would take millions to get everything built up. Sidewalks, I mean, like, it's just, there again, so I looked at what we'd have to do for the lots, it'd make them unaffordable. I mean, I wish I could do that, it's not there.
Can they run septic and something like that?
If you have over a one acre lot, and that's what I looked at doing, too, it's not, just logistic wise couldn't, it wasn't working at all. Otherwise, I'd have moved forward with that.
In a city application, and I, this would probably be for you, Regine, is it, can they do cistern type water systems in a subdivision that's, well, I guess it would be within the city per se, city limits?
So, it depends, and that's up to the Public Works Director. If it's within 300 feet of a city main, then you're required by code to hook up at the owner's expense.
That's not a main, though, it's only a four inch, correct? That's just a little one.
Yeah, and I do want to remind you, in answer to your other question, that it is owned R5 right now. For any subdivision, remember that our codes are written such that the subdivider bears all the cost of the city infrastructure. And that's why Mr. Leaf Green is saying, it is just costly to do what, do what he wanted to do, and he would have to recoup that from the lot sales. Not impossible, but very costly, because that is how our codes are written.
Unless you went with a cistern and a septic system on a one acre lot, which, I don't know, you know, I don't know all the rules.
Paving the street, white, I mean, there's, it was expensive.
In, in your original application, correct me if I'm wrong, we had water all the way to the end, so we did have pressure enough for city water, which would have been borne by the, cost would have been borne by the subdivider. A 24 foot wide paved road, no curve and gutter. And a portion of the lots could get into the sewer, and the rest would have permission from the county for the one acre septic permit.
And then because of the size, I might have to put in a park, I might not, there was a lot of things like that.
A lot of things with it, okay, well, thank you.
Yep.
But, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Josh Hahn, I have some of those similar concerns, that this is an area where it can be our densest development. And as I recall, I was on the liaison to the Planning Commission at the time, you're looking at development, and you're looking at, you know, 12 homes, and, you know, this could be an area where there's multiple apartment buildings. We could do planned unit development, where there can be the pocket neighborhood style of homes, or there could be a number of homes there, that could help offset the cost for that. So, a great point, and I think we can continue that as we get to where it is on our agenda as a voting item for that. Admittedly, I have to say, Mr. Leaf Green also have a little bit of trepidation about rezoning for the, a potential purchase, and then whether or not that actually goes through, and/or then that land, the new owner could change their mind, and choose to do something totally different.
If I did keep it, it would be better for me, being agriculture there, to open up more possibilities of what could, I could do with the property. So, even if he didn't buy it, I would prefer it to be rezoned, but.
Thank you, any other questions for Mr. Leaf Green? Okay, then we will close the public meeting at 6:10. Right, next up, communication from the floor. Anyone who wants to make public comment, please approach the microphone, state your full name for the record. This meeting and comments are electronically recorded, all comments will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone interested in public comment? Okay, well, that's an easy one, we'll move on to council updates, then. We'll start with you, Councilmember Dan Hahn.
I was just going to talk about the 4th of July, the parade and the rodeo, it was great, the weather was awesome. It rained before they blew the town up, so we didn't, we had one fire, so that was a good night.
Can, can you make that happen next year, too? That was awesome, can you make that happen each year?
I would love to. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I did have an update on LITA. While we didn't have a quorum at our meeting, we did have a pretty good meeting, we have two new LITA members. And I am just on the periphery, but there's some new exciting work happening with LITA, where they're going to be reaching out to community differently, and engaging the community in some better needs for our, our economic development. And then really building on the pillars of what we know to be successful, and how to manage that with what we currently have, and then also what that looks like for, for the future. Really a good group of folks who are pretty dedicated, knowing that there's been some mistrust, I guess, if you will, or kind of a bad rap, if you will, for LITA, and they, they're just moving forward and doing what they can, so I appreciate that. So please stay tuned as, as we, as we work on that. I've just been really excited about LITA and learning a whole different aspect of life about economic development. And one of the things I wanted to remark is, you know, for many of us, including myself, we're economic development illiterate, and understanding that our limitations and how we narrate those limitations have profound impact in our community. And so for those of us who are illiterate, which I'm putting myself in that category, it's, it's an opportunity to learn differently, and how dollars make sense in our community, and why it's important to continue to grow specifically in financial or fiscally hard times. So it's been a, it's been an absolute pleasure to learn that. The Chamber, of course, had their Brew Fest in June, and seemed to go very well, there were no incidents there. You know, WRTA has done a really good job of offering safe rides, they're very visible, they're, I believe it was, there were 50% more who took safe rides this year than last. And the crowd is just relatively, it's relatively uneventful in the sense of nonsense. So it was a, it was a good, it was a good venue, and I'll say too, I visited with several people that, that attended, and most of the folks that I visited with that I didn't know, obviously I talked to people I knew, that I didn't know, were here from out of town, as, from all over, and they come every year for Brew Fest. They say it's the best Brew Fest in a small town they've been to, and they go to Cody and Salida, Colorado, and other places, and I'm like, you know, listen. So, very user friendly. Anyway, they did a good job, the Chamber did a good job of managing that, and it seemed to go well. And then they, I have a Chamber meeting on the 16th, so that is it, thank you.
Councilmember Stubel.
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing to report from the committees that I serve as liaison for, it's a bit of a lull in the summer, but I'll just say, really grateful, and behalf of many of us, right, for the first responders on the 4th, for staying vigilant, keeping us safe here in the community, managing, right, the influx of people, it's always remarkable how many folks come to town. And so, it's all hands on deck for first responders and for volunteers for all the events that day, and so I'm grateful to everybody who pulled it off. And then I would just like to extend our condolences on behalf of City of Lander to the family of Mr. Winchester, Clyde Winchester, who passed away tragically, and I believe that he had been a city employee, I was told at one point, but I know he's probably connected to a lot of folks here in Lander and across the city, so that was a tragic loss, and our condolences to the family. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Uh, nothing of real importance, I wanted to speak about the parade, I had some people, which I honestly didn't know, but after watching the parade and everything, and kind of dealing with some little ones that were getting out of hand, not my own, but others. I was noticing how we, we've got to collaborate our brains somehow, and come up with a way to clear Main Street from everybody rushing the floats. And like, because it's like, growing up, when I grew up, you didn't go past a white line, like, you know, but parental guidance was a little stronger back then. But that kept everybody clear. We had kids, the ones we talked to were running up and actually like slapping the floats, and I mean, it's semis,
Wow.
Got like big tires rolling, all it takes is one, one little mishap, and our, our parade is done, you know, so. I, I don't know what direction we could go to actually contain the, the crowd to, you know, the, and, and the people who came to me, it wasn't about people running against it, that was my own personal thing. The people who came to me were like, hey, you know, we came from out of town, set up our stuff, and then we got 50 people standing in front of us, and we can't see anything, you know, because they, everybody just rushes the, the floats, and. That, but it, it's concerning. We've had a wonderful thing for as long as I've been alive, and, you know, all it takes is one, one bad incident, and none of us want to go through that, so it's.
Agreed.
I just, if we could, you know, think of different ways, you know, to possibly come up with a solution.
Yeah.
It's a tough one.
Yeah. Yeah, especially as we get, you know, literally thousands of people on Main Street for it.
And the more, the longer we allow it to happen, the worse it's going to get. And, and I've witnessed that throughout the years of just growing up here, you know, we're pretty much double to triple the population, so it's a lot of people. But that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Couple of things on my end, likewise, appreciation for the 4th of July, and I will state publicly again, Cowboy State Daily got it wrong. Lander's the best place for the 4th of July, I know they did say might be, but, you know, I'm just going to refute that right off the top. Couple of things for all of us to note, because I think the public will ask about it. We've got two big events that are going to be based out of City Park here, Climbers Fest, and then Tour de Wyoming. And so those groups do have permission to camp on the east side of City Park. So if you have folks questioning, because we've talked about that not being a camping area, but those are sizable events that do have permission to do that along the way, or similar to that. We've also noted that we didn't want that parcel of land to become a giant parking lot, and we're having some challenges with the way the current gate system is, that it's easy to, to open it up and turn into a parking lot. We've seen that happen already a few times. Parks Crew is working on getting a more substantive gate put in, that will hopefully make it easier to, to limit access for that, just for, for those who should be there, just so you know for that. And likewise, another one I think we're all getting comments on is, because of the McFarland Drive project, and how that's truncated water access right now, that's why we're not watering that little triangle park by Mr. D's, Antelope Park, all the way down to the Maverick. So we need to get all the parts installed and get that going, and, and then we can start watering those parcels again. So it's just, you know, one of those things, it's not, I'm, I'm sure we'd all prefer to have green grass on the entrance into town, but, you know, until the water system gets finished up, that's what's going on there. Lastly, in terms of the strategic plan that, that council did with Kristen, one of the things that's come to my mind is, you know, 2020 hindsight, I wish we had first looked back at our previous strategic plan to make sure that any residual items from that were carried forward into it. And so what I'd like to do, and the, before our next work session meeting in August, is go through those items, add it to the document that Kristen's presented, having them denoted either in a different color or italics or something, for all of us to, to review before we vote on adopting of that. So those are, those are my updates for y'all.
Can I add something really quick about, you're talking about the west side of the park, correct?
Sorry, yes, I said east.
Okay.
No, I was just.
Set other. Formulate, yeah, okay.
Not McManus Park.
The other, why, why is it that we, I thought the farmer's market should go there? Like, the farmer's market's in a horrible location.
They, they actually love it.
They do?
They're having more business than ever, being right there on one of the busiest intersections of town.
Okay, perfect.
Color me surprised, too, yeah.
Well, I was just curious what the, so we want to keep traffic out of there. What, what is our main reasoning, safe, what is the main reasoning for keeping traffic out?
I think it, it's a variety of things, one being that it's just going to degrade the, the ground quality there. So I think that's, that's a big part, but I, I don't know all the reasons, but collectively, we're all like, yeah, we don't want it to become a big parking lot.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know what it is, and then we can be messaging that differently. You know, I thought we were going to make it a pond, so that ground wouldn't, right, wouldn't matter. Or does it, is it something?
Mayor, if I may. Couldn't speak to that.
Yeah, I don't.
Thank you, Mayor, I think in the, in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, it is more of a natural area with the possibility of a pond, if we decide to fund and progress with that. But I, knowing that that's probably, you know, who wants to guess four or five years out, we probably have a Dust Bowl before then, and so I think keeping, you know, native vegetation here is really hard to bring back, once you've grounded down for a summer, and it's, you know, we're not irrigating out there right now. So I think it's important to keep it pretty natural and undeveloped for now. And Mayor, if I could tag a question onto that thought, the big groups that are permitted to use it, which are limited, like, limited number of groups who are allowing, they're bringing in porta potties, is that right?
I'm, I'm assuming that, I'm seeing nods from Regine that that is going to happen, which is appropriate.
Yeah, and I was going to put this in my update, but I'll address it now. So when you adopted the fee schedule, we added a line item in there that said, at the Parks Director's discretion and approval, that we could have overflow camping, and he would designate how many toilets they would have to bring in, and what the extra fee would be. So that isn't the fee schedule. And then I, I do concur with Councilwoman Stubel that at the onset of the, the master plan and the exhibits in there, that we decided not to develop that 10 acres west of the park into anything immediately, until we had the long range plan for what the whole city park would be. So we're keeping it a natural area, unless the Parks Direct Director approves something on a one, one by one basis.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you, and with that, we'll move to staff updates, so Interim Chief Waugh, what do you have for us?
I'll talk about 4th of July. It's easy to say it's probably one of the best 4th of Julys that we've had, and that comes from people that have been here way longer than I have. But statistically, from 24 to 25, our calls for service were down 41%. Self-initiated activity was higher, actual calls for crimes between 24 and 25, there was a 58% decrease in calls for crime this year versus last year. There was a 75% reduction in traffic crashes, which is mind blowing, if you think about the number of vehicles and people moving, that we were way down. We did have our multi-jurisdictional DUI team here from 2:00 in the afternoon until 10 o'clock that night. I joked with Councilman Dan Hahn outside, that I think the one time in the year that anybody prays for rain more than a rancher is a police officer in a big event like this, because it reduces so much for us, but. Overall, we had a great 4th of July, the special work that I did with Kyle at the Lander Bar on not shutting down their street, all of that worked seamlessly. So they were able to get their crowds in and out, and gave us no trouble the morning of the 4th. Just overall, long term, I looked today as I was playing statistician, we're at just under 8% of a decrease of where we were this time last year for calls for service across Landers, so. We're still growing, things are still good. I, too, have the same concerns as Councilman Josh Hahn with the parade and the crowding. Last year, the solution was Chief Peters led the parade, and I spent time in our police razor, running up and down both sides of the parade, back and forth entirety of the parade, and it's cumbersome, it causes somewhat of disarray with people and their kids, and I guess my concern is, when you're in the police razor and you use the siren, it's probably too loud for even the driver, and, and I would be, from me to Mr. Leaf Green away, and they don't hear it, they don't see it, they're focused on candy, they're. I too do not have the answer for that, I don't know what it is, I don't know if we advertise a lot more that you can't pass the white line. With Councilman Josh Hahn's opinion, I think it's a parenting issue, but if we visit buying more candlestick cones and roping it back to where they can't cross, I don't, I don't know the answer, but I, I too strongly believe that one major event's going to ruin that parade forever. So I, I'm open to whatever we decide we can do, I just don't have the answer for that.
Mayor, if I may, please. I'm sorry, am I cutting you off, Interim Chief?
No, you're fine.
I was just doing a quick search, because I recall that there had been a tragic death in Pine Dale, Wyoming, somewhat recently, from a child in a parade. And they, they have the participants of the parade hand candy out, so the participants are walking from the floats to the kids, and of course, so then you have to have, right, parenting enforcement of that as well, but perhaps like this, the fencing, so I'm trying to think through, like, what can the city do, given it's not, like, it's, Lotra is running the parade, so we need to go to Lotra and influence, enforce, ask whatever we need to do, that they perhaps change how the parade runs, that candy is handed out instead of thrown, and then perhaps there's measures we can take, it sounds cumbersome to fence, or to, not fence, but, what's the word I want here? Put up a barrier, put some kind of striping up.
But I have three to four guys that, if you've ever been out early in the morning, it's pretty impressive, the amount of cones and things that they get put up, and the time that they do, and it's in the hundreds and hundreds, the other, I guess, possible potential issue is, that's a state highway, so I don't know how that all plays in with YDOT, and I see Adam's light on, and he's usually Captain America on, jumping in with an answer.
I am a superhero. Two things, this issue is not new to Lander, but I've done a lot of research on the liability for this, and I've presented this multiple times to the City Council. One thing that is true across the board, the most effective way of ensuring safety in parades is to make it illegal to throw candy from the floats and to have candy throwers. And so, for example, last year, my kids rode on Governor Gordon's float, and he had me tossing candy out, and he, they were really strict that I had to be so many feet away from the, the float to throw it, and I think that's becoming more statewide. It would probably be best to maybe enforce a ordinance of some sort, saying that we're outlawing candy being thrown from floats, and that they have to be tossed from candy throwers, but that's up to you guys, we really don't have a lot of control, because. We really don't have a lot of control, because it's not our parade, and it's, we really don't have anything to do with it. So.
I would imagine we would be largely in favor of something like that. And again, that's, it's not our, our parade, but that, that moves towards getting better enforcement for that.
And Mayor, that would, a resolution, ordinance, right, it's setting, are setting the rules for any of the parades then, too, frankly, because we have.
Correct.
Lander parade, right, so.
I mean, the only issue is enforceability, right? So we could say, we're going to outlaw throwing candy, and, you know, I, I would hate to see the cops wrestling down Santa Claus and putting him in cuffs because he was throwing candy from his float.
I would film that.
Maybe I'd like to see that.
It's now become my bucket list. That's my bucket list item, thanks.
Kelly's out there with a taser, ready to taze anybody throwing candy from their float, but I do think that that might bring some awareness to people that are doing floats that, I, I mean, whether you want to do it by resolution or send out some sort of notice to the parade organizers that this is now part of what we're doing in the city, but this has been an ongoing problem dating back a lot of, I mean, the whole time I've been a city attorney, every single year, this is becoming more and more of a problem where there's a bunch of feral children out there running like crazy, hopped up on candy, wanting more candy, and, you know, they're, they're very dangerous.
Yeah.
Yeah, just comment. We, you know, it hasn't been that long ago that we put a stop to handing alcohol off of floats, because if you remember correctly, that used to happen. So it's not, like, impossible to be better than what we do. I mean, that was a good.
Yeah.
Shift in thinking.
And we also banned, banned water balloons, even though I did see a number of water balloons being tossed, but that, there's a lot of safety and liability with parades, and we want to keep our citizens safe, so.
Is this something we need to have a sit down with? Lotra, is it who you say?
Yeah, I was just saying, I can certainly have a conversation. So Maggie Appleby and.
Sure.
Her crowd, family and others are the organizers of the parade, and happy to have a conversation. I, I can't, I, I should say, I'm confident that Maggie likewise wouldn't want anything awful to happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, full court press on making those changes. So, anything else?
I have nothing else, unless people have questions for me.
Ray Jean?
Thank you, Mayor. Lance asked me to give you a couple of updates. Of course, the Lincoln Street closure is front and foremost here, but it is moving along. Lance is trying to come up with solutions with the contractor to make that faster, do more blocks at a time, those kind of things, but none of those resolutions have been made. I do want to echo, with the closure of Lincoln Street this year, we did not allow street closures. That was for the Winter River Pride, the Art Fest, and the, on the market. I likewise have heard from the market vendors that they love where they're at, and at the Art Fest, the art fair, they all said, this is where we should be.
On Main Street.
The other construction project is the tap grant around Gannet Peak sidewalks.
Yeah.
Do you want us to come back to you?
Yes, that'd be great. Yeah. Don't need to make you choke your way through your update.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Okay. Gannet Peak sidewalks, that was supposed to start a couple of weeks ago, but it is in force now. You'll see some barrels coming up, and so be very careful along Sweetwater and Seventh and Canyon, because that construction will be starting. Lance also noted that the Bishop Randall project is causing some closures, you saw them posted on County 10, for access to the hospital. Know that the hospital still has 24/7 access, but it's very restricted. That will be for a short time until that grant project is done. Any questions for Lance?
I do have a question. There was some work on Fifth Street being done, and there was some water issue. Can you tell us what was going on there?
I can't, I don't know about the water issue. I know that the Gannet Peak project does have some, they're putting on flashing beacons for Crosswalk there at Fifth into the school. If it was outside of that, I don't know of anything that was going.
No, it was not outside of that, it was on Garfield and.
Yeah, there was a water line break there.
Yeah.
A main line.
They were doing soil sample.
The condition of the asphalt's to see if we could save money when we go to do Fifth Street, they didn't mark a, they didn't do a locate correctly, because they had to witch it, because our, our maps are all wrong, and they found out that there was three lines. So they actually ended up hitting one of those lines, and that's what caused the damage in the exit waters.
Yeah, they did, and so they caused that. So then, with that water going into that garage, have we resolved that?
I assume she'll probably put a claim out towards our insurance. I don't know that anything has been turned out in yet, but they were all surprised. And then there was a total line that went the whole length of it that was not connected to anybody at all. So there were surprises in that road.
Dana?
Ray Jean, I have a, one of the homeowners down there on the, on Fremont, and you know who he is. He wanted to know what's happening with the flood mitigation and the, and the flood wall itself. He, he wants to do some work down there, and is this something, you know, a year out, two years out, is it even in the, in the picture anymore? I mean, is it?
That's a great question. So it is still in the picture, and we are still at the behest of the Corps of Engineers schedule. They've given us a schedule that keeps, it's a moving target, right? We were supposed to already have 60% designs, and we do not yet. We will have a new schedule, and that was one thing I was going to announce, the city will have an open house on August 6th at the community center, and we always get an updated core schedule at that date. So please have that landowner come and talk to either Strike Engineering or City Personnel August 6th, and we'll hopefully have a better, a better schedule for you.
So we really, we really don't know yet.
We don't, and like I said, we're, we're relying on the Corps of Engineers Section 205 funding to get that done, and we have no control over the core schedule. That's been our problem for the last three years.
Have you, have you heard, like, ballpark figures? That, have they thrown any, any figures out of where this is? Not too yet, or have they?
Dollar figure, dollar figures or land?
Yeah, no, 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 dollar figures of, of, like, project figures. I mean, do they, do they give you ballpark figures of, of, you know, where it's at?
Yeah. And again, on August 6th, I don't know that the Corps will be comfortable putting out figures, but when we started this in 2017, they had told the council that it would be about $8.25 million. It is at least double that now, with not very many changes to the designs.
So, yeah, yeah, that, that's.
So it'd be safe to say 16 to 20 million would be real safe number.
Okay, yeah, that'd be, what, four, four million plus out of the city's pockets in, on that?
Yes, and we're trying to get additional funding for that. The Section 205 is 60/40, 60% federal, 40% local. However, that legislation is capped at $10 million. So the Corps of Engineers' portion of the construction would only be $10 million unless we get additional grant funds.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, great.
Clarifying question, thank you, Mayor. Is there a way, you know, I remember years ago having a conversation with the Corps of Engineers and what they said, and this is a lengthier conversation, so the question will be somewhat simple, that the design could not cause harm downstream, and they were having a very difficult time not doing that by their design. That's their words, which I think has waylaid it a little bit in some capacity. My question is, can we drive the train? Like, we can't, one, if we vote on it and it, and it passes, we can't wait for construction costs to be $400 million. And, and we're just waiting, and I, maybe the Corps won't pay for it or whatever, but where is our responsibility to our community to come up with a plan and say, hey, this is what we're saying, and this is what we're gonna drive, instead of waiting for this? You know, the Corps is currently working on those massive fires in California, and now they're going to be working in a flood that took numerous lives. So we are not a priority. So it could be years. And as we wait, costs go up and go up and go up.
Yeah.
And that makes no sense to me.
And you're, you're right, Councilwoman, we are not driving the train, and we have very little say. We've tried two different methods to have a little say in this, and both of them have failed so far. We had Senator Lummis's representative come in and talk to us, see if they could do an audit on the Section 205 for Lander to see what the holdup is and get that ball rolling. That was unsuccessful in our favor. And then we've also, because the Corps of Engineers wouldn't go downstream, you know, that don't cause downstream damages, a Main Street Bridge, we initiated the whole Middle Fork, the Propoja Restoration Project that Strike is working on now that we got an MRG grant for, because the Corps of Engineers and the feds were clearly not gonna play that game. So we're going forward at the snail's pace, that's for sure.
Does, is there ever a halt? I mean, do we lose money if we say?
So we have, I can't remember what year you guys signed it, but you signed a PPA, a partnership project agreement, project partnership agreement. When that was signed, I, Adam and I had them put in a clause for termination in the event council doesn't fund it, in the event that we flood the town or it doesn't exist, you know, so I, I have a termination clause put in there. We've, that is one thing we have not tried, we've not tried to terminate that agreement.
Just wonder, too, with the time, and we have a constituent who wants to do some work on his property and, and granite, then that just delays it. So anyway, back to another day and another conversation, but the reality is, is this has been going on, and I feel like we need to take a little bit more control or.
Not fair.
Or having some kind of resolve to this within a certain amount of time.
Okay. If, if you don't mind, or if you think it's appropriate, staff will put together a short outline of the things I've described that we've tried to do, and maybe we could have a brain station some night, path forward.
Yeah.
Basically, it would be a council decision, right? If council decides it's important enough to go forward with, maybe we're stuck on the track that we're on now. If council decides that it could be less expensive through a private route with not, without that $10 million, that could be a decision you could make. So there are decisions the council could make.
Well, and I want it to be very clear that I know that this is not our staff issue, that this is a core issue. You guys have done everything you possibly can, working with other engineers as well, and so I recognize that, but I also recognize that the core is tied up.
Exactly. And, and likewise, the core has ultimate control over it, unfortunately. I mean, I, I agree, it'd be great if we could sit as equal partners at the table, and, and we're not, both in terms of the, the conversation, the funding, you know, so many elements of it, and ultimately, they have the, the final consequence if we either do flood mitigation and protect the 900-plus buildings in town, or we don't do that, and then we're forced to adopt the revised flood map, which likewise causes a lot of problems. And, yeah, it's, it's a challenging place to be, and I'll also give kudos, Ray Jean, I've, I've seen multiple times, gently but firmly pointing out that costs have escalated through no fault of the city of Lander, as we've waited for Army Corps of Engineers, kind of keeping, keeping that message out, especially with our federal contacts for that. And, and it's unfortunate and frustrating that that's kind of the limit of where we can influence things. Yeah.
Anything else?
Thanks. Shari?
I have nothing tonight, unless you have a question.
Adam?
I don't have anything tonight unless anybody has questions for me.
It's your turn, you're on.
The only thing I wanted to mention was, I had a question from Councilmember Cassidy about the possibility of elected officials waiving any of the compensation you're entitled to for going to council meetings and liaison meetings. The state statute did change as a revolt of, a result of COVID, I believe, and that is possible under state statute now, but our code doesn't reflect that change. So at his request, I will provide a document that would include that language to amend our ordinance that if somebody wanted to forego all or some of whatever they are paid for attending as an elected official, they could do so. So you may see that in a draft form from me at the next meeting.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Rochelle, our clerk? Okay, moving on then, consent agenda. This would be approval of the June 10th, 2025 regular city council minutes, approved June 24, 2025 work session minutes, and approved bills and claims. I get a motion and a second.
So moved.
Mayor, I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember, Councilmember Stubble.
Sorry, I do have a discussion item, and if you're moving on.
Yeah, any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I propose an edit to the June 10th regular session meetings? And I'll pose this as an amendment to the approval. But if you look at June 10th meeting minutes, Section 3C, there's a statement about a council member moving for a three-month probation, and that motion failed, but I'd like to highlight my own failure here with this motion and have it be Councilmember Stubble, so that we're just clear for everybody who made that motion. So add Councilmember, or add Stubble to the council member there on 4C. So Mayor, I move that we amend the minutes of June 10th, 4C, to say Councilmember Stubble moved for a three-month probation.
Great, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. So we'll vote on the amendment, and we'll start with you, Councilmember Dan Hahn.
Yes.
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 Okay, the amendment passes, and going back up to consent agenda, any other discussion? Councilmember Josh Hahn?
Yes.
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 And that passes. Okay, moving on, we have new business action items, the first one being to accept Dean McKee's resignation from the Lander Housing Authority. And Ray Jean, if you can fill us in.
The actual resignation email was in your shared drive, and this puts a board of five, as dictated by the state statutes, down to three. So we are looking for two new members for the housing authority board.
Can I get a motion in a second?
I move to approve the resignation of Dean McKee from the Lander Housing Authority.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Dan Hahn. Any comments, questions?
Just an absolute gratitude for his service. I know he's been.
Agreed. Agreed. And he continues to serve the Lander community quite, quite well. So, we'll call for the question, Councilmember Dan Hahn.
Yes.
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 Okay. That motion passes. Next, item B, approve ordinance 20, 2025-5Z, 25.01, rezoning on the first reading. This was what we had the public hearing about earlier. I get a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Dan Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Josh Hahn. Discussion about this.
I don't really have any discussion, I don't have a lot of interesting thoughts. I'm a little, I'm a little, like, excited about that opportunity, and then also concerned about housing, right? So it just, it's just such a complex issue, because it's zoned for multifamily, that's not possible because of the cost.
Well.
And other infrastructure issues.
Twelve, twelve lots, but there are.
Right.
There are ways to do it in a more, in a denser fashion.
Right, with apartment complex or that sort of thing, so.
Well, and that seems to be kind of a downfall, like, everybody's coming up short on apartments, you know, I mean, it's, they're all getting rented out so fast that, you know, you got people looking, and.
Yeah.
It's a tough one. It really is.
It is a tough one, I agree.
Because I love, I love nature and trees and all that stuff, but we also need to address a situation that's been coming back and haunting us for. address a situation that's been coming back and haunting us for many meetings.
Agreed. I have those same, same concerns and, you know, also cognizant that we do have a lot of agricultural land outside of town. And we know, given our current infrastructure challenges, it'd be easier to have an agricultural business outside of town than extend our water sewer, et cetera, you know, for miles out of town. Now, that's a challenging one.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmembers Stubble.
Thank you. I mean, I, I agree with everybody's challenging, complex one. It's, it's such a weird area, right? I'll just say it, like, there's ag, there's commercial, there's high-density residential in that commercial. It's the, it's a juxtaposition of like the two most contrary types of zoning in one spot. I, I'm glad that we have three readings for this, frankly, because I think I want to do a lot more deliberation. I want to learn a bit more, think through the, think through the options. So I'm a yes vote tonight, given that we have the time to debate and keep learning about this. But I, yeah, I found a note of caution too here. There's, there's, it's really difficult to take away high-density residential in Lander right now, and that's a weird area for it too. So I'm yes to nightmare, but certainly not sure if, as I learn more where that will go through the next few readings. And we're also missing two, council. I know that's not our reason to, we're not gonna delay it regardless, but like, this is a time where we need everybody's brains. So I hope we put this forward for further debate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good point. And like Chris, you know, the rezoning of the ag property adjacent to this was done several years ago. And I was less familiar with our housing needs at the time. And I have to say, that's a vote I regret. I wish I had not voted to change that from R5 to agriculture. It's this property.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, any other discussion?
So originally was this put into R5 with the thought of expansion? Is that why it was there in the first place? Or I, I, I'm fairly new, you know, like into this stuff. So I don't know, you know, I mean, that would be my thought if it was brought in at an R5, you know, that's all residential. That would mean to me like it was put there for expansion reasons.
Yeah.
You know, for, like, foreseeing this future, you know?
I, I can't speak to that because I think it was zoned R5, like, was that back in the seventies when we first did the zoning? Regine, do you have insight on that?
It was either in the 2002 or the 2012 master plan. And, you know, in the new plan, they gave you kind of bubbles. They gave you areas that are, are easy to develop, hard to develop, and, and really hard to develop. In the original two plans that I mentioned earlier, they gave areas, right? They blocked out areas. This would be great for denser zoning. This would be great for commercial zoning. So it came from one of those two master plans.
That's when it was zoned R5, or that when it was identified as, okay.
Actually, you got a huge section of R3 right next to it. So it doesn't make, like, in my mind, it doesn't make sense to drop agriculture, you know, agricultural right there and then have R3 right next to it, when it could all be an expansion.
Yeah. Yeah, that's me. I, I regret having voted to, to switch that to the ag, but that's water under the bridge at that point. So, other discussion?
So the Planning Commission has approved this and feels like it's a, or has it's not gone through the?
It, it has gone through the Planning Commission.
I thought so. I thought they said this was appropriate.
And I, I think to, I have an opinion about that. I, I
I have an opinion on that.
When, when we declined the proposals that the Planning Commission had, they, they were quite frustrated with us as a governing body that we tasked them with a specific goal. They spent a lot of time working on it and then we negated all of their efforts. And there was a lot of frustration for that. And I, I can't help but think interpretation, I want to own that, that this is a bit of, does council really, really care about providing housing densities or, or not?
So Mayor, if I may, I put this directly in the ordinance because this is how the Planning Commission stated that their vote to recommend this is that it, you know, everything is in order, all the paperwork was in order, and the request to be in concert with the adopted 2025 master plan growth priority areas two and three, and therefore recommends approval of the rezoning by unanimous vote. And, and that's what they're stating. They are, are not trying to make a decision on your priority that you put on housing opportunity, right? They're saying it meets all of our codes and that it meets the master plan growth plan.
Yeah. I thought it was not actually unanimous vote. I, I believe there was, okay, I thought there was one dissenting vote, but thank you.
Mayor and Assistant Mayor, can we look that up? Because the minutes from the planning and zoning have Mr. Newsom saying he was a no vote. So let's double check that and then correct if we need to. Yeah.
Yeah, in that case, let me look that up. And if you would approve it on first reading, if that's what your motion is, is tonight, with amendments to be in concert with the zoning minutes. Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Further discussion? So seeing none? We'll call for the question, starting with Councilmember Danhan.
Yes.
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 No.
And motion passes. So there will be a, a second reading. Next, Item C, approve resolution 1362, amending the City of Lander policy and procedure manual as it pertains to on-call pay and travel reimbursement. And Shari, you've been voluntold for this one, probably in tandem with Rochelle.
Has everyone remembered the discussion last week on it?
I do.
Yeah. Yep. So
I'm, I move that we approve resolution 1362, amending the City of Lander policy and procedure manual as it pertains to on-call pay and travel reimbursement.
We've got a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Stubble. Any additional conversation about this? Okay, we'll call for the question, Councilmember Joshon.
Yes.
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 And that motion passes. Next up, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Creative Energies Consulting Services Agreement. And Regine, I've got you as the voluntold party for this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This was discussed in the May 27th presentation that Kara Kolovich made to the council. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any, anything on that.
Actually, let's go back and get a motion in a second before we go into discussion.
Mayor, I move approval and authorization for you to sign the Creative Energies Consulting Services Agreement.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Stubble, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Now we'll have a discussion, if there is any.
Yes.
Councilmember Danhan.
Well, first off, I have a, I have a question. Have we, have we submitted a grant application?
In your shared drive, there are three pre-application forms that we fill out. This is one of those things where we haven't submitted the application yet, but we have partners submitting multiple applications. The total project, should it go forward and be granted, is $132,755,000. With all of our partners, tax credit and Blue Sky contributions, the city investment would be about $10,000. So if you are in concert with the program, as Ms. Kolovich presented it to you, then the grants will be written. The grant can't be written without this additional work that Creative Energies will do to come up with the final numbers for the grant application.
Okay. Well, the, the reason why I ask, and if, if people in the audience don't know, what they want us to do is they want us to put $2,000 up, but they also have in here, and I, I, I think it, I really don't like this terminology, but it says the, the client successfully completes and submits the Blue Sky grant application by the Blue Sky application deadline. And then the second line says, if the client does not meet the above deadline, that your fee will not be refunded. And I, I, you know, I don't like that part, you know, your, your, you know, the good faith part, you know? I, I, I don't believe that that's a good way to start a partnership by saying, if you, if you don't do this, then we're gonna keep your money. I think that if we're, if we're gonna go into an agreement with them, I, I don't think that should be in here.
So a, a good point. Also, keep in mind that Rocky Mountain Power, that oversees the Blue Sky Energy Program, waived the deadline and actually approached the city to please apply for this program.
Okay, why, so if, if all the parties know that, why do they put that in there? I mean, I, I just think that, that I, I, it just doesn't look good to me. It looks like they don't trust us. And maybe, maybe that's just a legal mumbo jumbo, but I, I don't, I don't care for that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman? I'm comfortable with this language solely because this is, there's a risk on this contractor. If we, if they do this work for us, they're asking for coverage for their labor right now, $2,000 worth, to set us up, to get us the information we need to put those grant applications in. We can't do the application without having the, you know, what they're gonna complete here. And so if we then failed, then we would be bad partners to, you know, go forward with the application, then they've sunk costs. You know, it's unfair. I think that's good business to do that.
Well, are we not, are we not gonna apply for this?
I think we are. So I think we're safe here.
Well, if we're, if we're gonna apply, then they should, they should trust us, I would think. I mean, if, if, if they, if, if this is a, pretty much a done deal, you know what I mean?
I mean, I think with Rocky Mountain Power, I don't know that, I think we feel optimistic with Rocky Mountain Power's decision here, but not, we can't call it a done deal until RNP has a say at the application. I'd add here too that there's a safeguard here for this company that if they, they are gonna do work for us, it will help us submit an application. And then once we, if we receive that grant funding, we'll put out an RFP for somebody to do the install here. It might not be Creative Energies that wins that RFP. So why would they do the labor in advance for free and have a, you know, competitor of theirs actually win the project? If they are selected for the RFP, that third bullet point here is that 50% of this $2,000 would be applied towards that total project cost. So they're willing to help us recoup if they are selected, but they're covering the costs of their services and their employees and their labor if they're not selected here.
Okay, when you put in for the grant, and I, I, I couldn't really hear you well, but when you put in for the grant, you're putting in for a dollar amount, right? You're not putting in for, you're, you're putting in for a dollar amount and it doesn't attach anybody installing it, right?
That's right.
Okay, so if you're putting in for a grant and there's nobody attached to it, why are we attaching somebody to it? If, if, if we have good faith here, then what we do is we put in for the grant. We don't even do this, like putting the cart before the horse, to me. You, you know what I mean? If, if we agreed to do, have them come do it, and we're putting in for the, we're putting in for the grant, then they should, we, we don't need this. We told them we would use them and, and, and then we get the, if we get the grant, then, then they do what they need to do and then we do the project, right?
Mayor, may I answer? So we need, what my understanding is, and I appreciate that that language is not great. We are contracting with them to do us a service so that we can submit for the grant. That language is bad because it doesn't show that. I agree with you. But, but we are paying them $2,000 to collect information for us, data, whatever we need, so that we can submit the grant.
So we have to, so what you're saying is, we have to have somebody, we have to have somebody submit with us then? So then we are attached then?
Well, we're not, they're not submitting with us. They're providing us the information. So they're going out and doing a contractual service to provide us the information to then apply. And what they're saying is, if they provide us all that information, so essentially
I totally understand.
It's a contractual relationship.
I understand what you're saying.
Two thousand, so that language in there is confusing because it sounds like we're entering to another relationship with them upfront, and we're not.
Well, I wasn't, that's not what I was talking about. I was talking about if you're, if you're applying for a grant, you're applying for a grant. We're not telling them, we're, we're gonna do a solar grant, but we're not, you know what I mean?
No, I do know what you mean, but they're, they're partnering with us to submit that grant.
Okay.
Essentially, we're using them as the experts to provide us the information to apply for that grant. And what they're saying is, if you, if we give you this information and you don't apply, we're, we're taking your $2,000 because we did the work. Yeah.
And, which, yeah, I, I, that's, I, I totally understand. I just don't get it. I think that there should be some trust there. And then obviously, if, if we apply and we do not get it, well, we're out the, the money no matter what. So, yeah, I, I just, I still don't like this language. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good, good discussion. Any other questions? Okay, call for the question, Councilmember Joshon.
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. Last thing we've got is approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Lander Municipal Hangar Space Lease Agreement between the City of Lander and Ironman Aircraft Hangars LLC for space number 113.
So moved. Nice. We're not repeating.
And? Waiting for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Joshon. Any discussion on this? Yes, and speaking of straightforward conversation with our city attorney the other day, one of the things he noted is that things like this, that are straightforward recurring contracts can actually be added to the consent agenda. We, we have the state statute to cover that. So understand that might be different in our future meetings, that we can have more items in our consent agenda for that. Seeing no questions or conversation, we'll have a call for the question, Councilmember Danhan.
Yes.
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 And that motion passes. And?
I do have just a comment, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go.
I've been through a lot of comments. I just, I do want to add to the discussion we had about Creative Energies. That contract was pretty vague. And it doesn't go into what exactly it is that they're doing for us. And I would, I would appreciate too, in the future, that there's a little bit more articulation about what it is they're doing, that they're gonna hold on to our money no matter what, which is fine. But really, what we're doing is paying them $2,000 to do a contractual service for us. And I would like to know what that exactly is. It does not say it in there. It just goes through the language about if this, then that, if this, then that. And it seems to me like that, there's, within vagueness or casualty, or casualness, we've lensed us, yeah, we, we really don't know what Creative Energies is doing, other than they're getting $2,000 no matter what.
Yeah.
So.
It's pretty thin.
Appreciate that. Yes. Your labor is too much longer toward the government. But can I ask, is that something that the council just didn't see? I imagine, you know, this is a contract, is there a scope of work that was not attached for us, but the city staff have in hand?
Uh, you know, Ann's been working on this project. So she gave me the background data and she put some stuff in your shared drive tonight that talks about all the partnerships. I do know what their scope of work is. They came and did an inventory. They did, we were in and out of power one day here at City Hall because they were doing load balances. And so they were getting very technical data to put into this grant application.
Which is absolutely fantastic. I would love to know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
And also nice that they've actually already done the work without having a contract.
Which isn't nice. That's actually, that's not good. That's not good.
A little, little awkward admittedly. Yeah. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Stubble. Call for the question, Councilmember Danhan.
Yes.
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 And we will see you all later this month, July 22nd.